of Atascadero and I, your mayor, will lead you in a pledge to the flag. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Darris.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Prochamfunk.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Well, those of you here this evening or in person or watching in any one of the multiple ways that you can, we welcome you and glad that you're here with us this evening. We don't have any presentations this evening, so we'll move right on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar contains items that are considered to be routine and non-controversial by staff and can be approved in one motion unless there's a member of the council wishing to pull an item. So we'll start by asking if we have any public comment on consent. Please come forward.
Good evening, council. On consent, item number four, I believe, and item number three. If I read it right, we're eliminating a position from, I believe, the police department. And we're adding one for building examiner, just questioning fiscal impact. If it's basically the same or if there's a change. Thank you.
Thank you. And so that was just item four, not item. So you meant under item four, numbers three and four. Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on consent? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close a public comment and bring it back to council and staff. I'll turn to the city manager. My understanding is there is no fiscal impact that we've just kind of moved some positions around and there isn't a monetary change.
That's right. The police lead records technician was changed to a police record supervisor. So this position is being removed and the plans examiner, building inspector is changing over building inspector two to that role. So we can have an in-house inspector and that in the reorganization's net even.
Okay, thank you very much. You might all notice we have a little bit of a change in in our sound system. And I think that, well, I hear myself very clearly. I don't know if it seems like possibly between our city clerk and our city manager seem, I don't seem to hear as well, perhaps closer to the mic, something like that. Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it to council, ask if there's any members of the council wishing to pull an item. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
A second. We have a motion by councilmember Borbo, a second by mayor Prochamfunk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Darris.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Prochamfunk.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to updates from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. And I was talking with deputy city manager Knight the other night. So our sound processor for the council chamber went out. And we were coming up with the reason why it's good to have a garage and why we store stuff in our garages at home, because we stored this in the city hall basement. And we're really glad that we stored that and have this alternate setup. So I appreciate deputy city manager Knight's ingenuity and just a note, storing things sometimes can be helpful, right? All right. So I do have several items tonight, mayor and council, to report on. The first is on the El Camino Real project construction update. You can see the slide up above you. Hardscape irrigation, electrical and drainage basin work continues on the west side of El Camino between East Mall and Highway 41. So we are finished with the east side of El Camino as far as bulb outs, drainage, planters. And so if you want to see a look at the future, you kind of walked it again this afternoon. You can actually see all that, which is great. So delays to the east side of the street should not be any longer. There are new lane shifts and traffic delays, though, because we're working on the west side of the street. And I think motorists are still trying to get used to that this week. No parking areas will be marked, but businesses and driveways always remain open. So you, Huckleberries is open, Mechanics Bank is open, Cochee is open, and the driveways will always remain open. So we appreciate people patronizing those businesses while work is being done in front of them. Do be mindful of bicyclists and pedestrians, especially with the changing traffic patterns. Slow down and stay alert. The good news is we are on schedule and pending if we maintain dryness through into the holidays. We are trying to be off of the west side before the holiday shopping season starts. I know it's very important to our clothiers and restaurants and that sort of thing. So we're optimistic that we can get the west side done before we get too close to the holiday season. After that, we'll be working in the center of the streets. So El Camino northbound and southbound will be in their respective lanes. Won't be lane shifts. I will have K rail down the center and working on the medians in the parking. But then it'll be much easier that you can park parallel on the east and west sides of the street and north and south traffic flow will be more normalized. So that's the goal. And then I think this is the hardest part of the projects. We appreciate the community's patience and we continue to work with our business owners. The switching gears to several events. Now, we are in Event City, and so I'm going to share with you a bunch of events, so be ready. Charles Paddock Zoo is offering two nights of Zoo Boo this year. This is always an important event that sells very well. We've heard from families in the past that one night may work, the other night may work. So there's no excuse. You have two dates that you can go to Zoo Boo. Maybe you can go to both and really get scared and get lots of candy. I will haul Halloween decorations throughout the zoo, carnival games, a costume contest for children and for the family, Halloween activities, a haunted maze, and we have a haunted barn if you want to be scared. So I understand it's not quite as scary as the haunt, but it is going to be pretty scary. We have live music and treats and we want to see those costumes out there. So it's a total family-friendly thing to do this weekend. Looking forward to seeing everybody out there. If Zoo Boo and partying with the animals isn't your thing, maybe you want to do a trailer ride at the bovine classic this Saturday, October 26th. It's a huge event. The race starts at 8:30. The festival begins at 12:30 and awards are at 4:00. This is deemed America's fourth hardest cow-themed gravel ride. So if you're interested, get in there because the entries could sell out. You need to sign up now. To remind you, I won't be in any of these races. There's a 93.6 mile race, a 69.3 mile race, a 49.6 mile race, and the baby bovine, 38.4 miles. So good luck to them. Okay, pray for a safe race. Our next update is World Lemer Day. Look at our lemur. We have several lemurs. We love them. World Lemer Day is this Friday with scheduled keeper talks, talking about our prized lemurs that represent Madagascar. Visitors can enjoy learning about the mongoose lemur and the ringtail lemur during their part. These are free with the zoo general admission, these special talks, and getting to learn more about our lemurs. So World Lemer Day. Well, that's, I look forward to celebrating that. Our winter hours start at the zoo on November 1st from 10 to 4:00. So it will end, close a little earlier as we get into our winter hours. If you don't get enough candy at Zoo Boo, join me and everybody else on Entrada on Halloween from 5 to 8. We will have our trick or treat on Entrada between El Camino Real and Palma. Plenty of vendors offering activities and candy. It is a sea of children and really fun costumes. We will have costume contests, children and pet categories and prizes. So appreciate our business community pairing up with us on this. It'll be a great evening and it's free. You will leave lots of candy and hopefully you spend a few dollars on our businesses. We appreciate them doing this and we want to give them some patronage, too. First Friday, November 1st. So we have two nights of Halloween party at the zoo. We jumped to Halloween and we're still rolling. And the first Friday, Dia de los Muertos is November 1st, 5:30 to 9:00. We have live music by Big Wheel of Cobra at Historic City Hall. We have the mariachi Mexicanismo band strolling through downtown, the folklorico dancers performing before the band begins. This was a great event last year and I know it will be this year. We'll also have Art Hop going throughout the downtown. So Friday is going to be a great evening to be here. Other Halloween activities, if you aren't getting enough here, we have the Halloween Spooktacular. This is put on by one of our former city employees, Mark Russo. This thing, I think, has national attention now. I wouldn't be surprised to see it on the news. It's at 7720 Cortez Avenue. It's now through Halloween from 6:30 to 8:30. You can see some really great decorations. Mark pulls out everything. He loves the families in our community and we're just proud to have a member of our city family doing this free thing for our community, sharing his passion. So thank you, Mark, every year. ABC Church is partnering with many other churches in the community, four other local churches, Sunday, the 27th. Wow, the dentists are going to do a great business in November here. This is four to six of the Sutton Gardens. Candy games, food, more candy out of the trunks of lots of cars around the Sutton Garden. And our, again, our churches are putting this on. We thank them for a safe family event. That's Sunday from four to six. More candy and games. And then the Haunt in Atascadero is known for being scary and this year is no different. So the haunt is open. They have a lights-on tour. That's probably what I could handle. They have regular tours and a terror tour. So $8 to $20 depending on the tour at the haunt. You should purchase your tickets in advance, thehauntinatascadero.com. Our partners at Visit Slocal have actually done a wonderful Halloween video featuring the haunt, Poison Apple, several of our businesses to enjoy this fall and during the Halloween season. We appreciate that. Okay, today and the rest of this week is residential waste drop-off week. So we definitely have this great opportunity to drop off. You can fill a vehicle. This is not trailers, not toxic waste, not anything like that, but your old piles of wood and trash and different things that you couldn't recycle, please do take them to the dump. Get your voucher first from the Waste Management Office. This is for Waste Management customers. You can call 805-466-3636. It was a hit. I swam through there in my lunch hour today. There was about 10 cars out waiting, so appreciate people taking advantage of that. My final update that I want to share is we've received our voter information guides. And so I want to hold that up. This is the voter information guide. This is, this does have instructions on how to vote, but it also has the statements on positions of local measures. So I want to make sure our voters cast informed votes. So as you go through past the directions, you can see statements for local races in here. And in the very back, in addition to the council election, we do have two local measures. So I just wanted to touch on those to educate our voters. Our first local measure is L24. L24 is the continuation of our half-cent sales tax. This has been used for road maintenance in our neighborhoods. It is a half cent. A yes vote would extend the tax, maintains the tax rate at 8.75%. So it does not increase taxes. It maintains the tax rate. A no vote would reject the measure and the tax rate would sunset a couple of years from now. And that's about $3 million the city would then lose that we wouldn't have to invest in neighborhoods. So cast an informed vote on L24. It is on the back of your voter guide. The other measure is M24, and this is about appointing the city treasurer as opposed to electing it. The city treasurer is an elective office currently. It has been placed on the ballot by the council. A yes vote would allow for an appointed treasurer, the thought there being that an expert treasurer, like our administrative services director, Mr. Angel, could be appointed treasurer. It's an efficient move that saves the city about $17,000 a year. A no vote would mean that you want to maintain the office being elective. And so those are the two ways you can vote on M24. It's in the back of your voter guide. I just wanted to call out, I've heard some from voters that they didn't know this information was back here. So I just wanted to call that out to people to make an informed vote. Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lewis. Especially that appointed treasurer, we're not by law able to actually tell you what that means. So I've had messages from people saying, what, what is this? What does this mean? And you have to flip all the way to the back to get to it. So I'm very glad we pointed that out. Any questions on our city manager's report? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to community forum. This is the portion of our meeting that is reserved for anyone wishing to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening but over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes and we allot up to 30 minutes for community forum. We ask you to come forward and that you would state your name for the record to help us out. So welcome to our first speaker.
Good evening, council and members of staff. Public Foslin, resident, still a business owner in Atascadero. I just may have switched businesses. I want to make a couple of comments regarding L24. And I guess I'll add in on M24 as well. 20 years ago, our city was definitely not our best city that we could be. We had a lot of issues. At this day and age, we are fiscally responsible. We do things right. We have a great staff. Everybody works together. And I do encourage all of our residents in Atascadero to vote L24 yes, which I can say publicly. We've done a great job in resurfacing the neighborhood roads. We're making headway here in the city of Atascadero. As to our city manager, it does not raise our tax rate. It keeps it the same. We are a very different city than we were 20 years ago, and that's why I would vote for our treasurer to be elected instead of appointed. We can trust everything going on in our city now. Sorry, I flopped it. And the other point is, unlike some of our other cities that have a large fiscal debt, we don't. And with the employees that we're hiring and keeping now, we're saving the city a lot of money because of what we have done. We don't have the turnover any longer, so we're not a training ground. Recruiting costs a lot of money. So again, I really do encourage anybody who can vote in the city of Atascadero legally to vote yes on those two measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Welcome to our next speaker.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Josh Cross. I'm the CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce, and I wanted to give you an update on the shop construction bonus program. Back in late July, we partnered with Sousa Construction and they sponsored this program with a check for $10,000 with the idea that we'd use the full amount to purchase gift cards from businesses in the downtown area. And so the chamber team has spent those funds supporting over 40, 45 businesses in the downtown area, buying like hundreds of gift cards, really. And we've been, and just to explain how the program works, for residents who spend $100 or more, they return their receipts to the Chamber of Commerce and get a $20 gift card to spend at another business in downtown and up to two gift cards per household. And the program has been a big success. To date, we've collected over $65,000 in receipts from people spending in the downtown to collect those gift cards. So we're pleased with the success of the program. We're down to like three or four gift cards left, so we're about to see the funds expire. So we are looking under couch cushions and everywhere else to try and find some additional funding to keep this program going, ideally through the holidays. So that is something that the chamber is working on. We'd love to partner with anyone who would like to help us out with that. But a big kudos to Sousa Construction for the work that they're doing and the timeliness that they're doing the work in. And to all the city team for helping us make this happen as well. So I just want to give you that update and let you know where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any other members of the public wishing to speak for community forum? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close community forum and thank both of the speakers for their comments. We don't have any public hearings this evening. We're going to move on to our management reports. And our first one is discussing a short-term rental ordinance framework. And I will turn this over to our community development director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore.
Thank you, mayor and council, and good evening. Been looking forward to talking about this since we had a discussion about this at our recent strategic planning session earlier this year. First of all, I'm going to give you just a few background tidbits on what these are. What are short-term rentals? What are vacation rentals? And I'm going to just take a quick breath for just a moment till we get the presentation up on the screen so I can show you what I'm talking about. Can you hear me okay, by the way, with this new system? New state-of-the-art audio? Wonderful. All right. First of all, I want to give you a little background. What are we talking about here? We're talking about any residential unit, or even a room for that matter, that's rented for less than 30 days. When they're rented more than that, that's a normal rental. That's a normal month-to-month rental. All of these types of rentals are also subject to what we call TOT or transient occupancy tax, just like a hotel or motel, like anything else in town. As of this year, as of September 2024, there's actually 139 of these that we're aware of in the city of Atascadero that are short-term rentals. We do tend to receive a lot of inquiries. We have seen quite an uptick in those in the last two years. And it's partly because of a lot of our surrounding communities have put in place limits and ordinances and caps on what can occur in their communities. Just as a number two, in fiscal year 2024, the city did receive about 331,500 in transient occupancy tax just from these types of rentals alone. And typically, you know, when we look online at sites like BRBO, there's a scatter map of what we currently have in Atascadero. Airbnb, quite, quite nice. Actually, some of these units, it's a right, really a nice highlight of Atascadero, shows these great properties. So this is what we're talking about. These are typically the main two sites you see these vacation rentals on. So earlier this year, in strategic planning, we talked about a few topics. And you had asked our staff to bring some of this information back to you. We talked about, should we have limitations? Should there be a minimum separation? How should the existing ones be treated? Should they be grandfathered in? Should we distinctly have a difference between home stays and vacation rentals? And what are home stays? Home stays are when someone's renting a room inside an occupied primary residence when the people are still living there, rather than a vacation rental, which is renting out the entire house. And should we have an application process and fees for cost recovery? Right now, it's just a commercial business license over the counter. And should there be some flexibility for transferring property when they sell or when properties are handed down and when people go away? How should we handle these things? So what staff's done is we've looked at a number of features, not only what the state law prohibits, but what other communities are allowing right now. And state law does intervene quite a bit. They don't want to preclude affordable housing units, and especially they've limited us being able to put these in the newer accessory dwelling units. And that law came into place in 2020. They don't also allow them in what we call urban dwelling units, which is another new unit that the state allows through SB9. And of course, they don't want them in deed restricted affordable units. They want to preserve these units to preserve our affordable housing stock. However, as a local jurisdiction, we, of course, can create an ordinance to have additional regulations based on our local needs. So right now, we don't have anything in our municipal code that speaks to this. However, we do have a little bit of what I'll call local policy, because in the community development department, we are able to adopt our own policies as to how we process these. And the building code also intervenes with that a little bit. So right now, we do issue a business license over the counter. It's called a home occupation business license. We only allow one of these per property. And in a commercial project, this is something that the building official determined some time ago that only about 40% of the units in a commercial mixed-use project could be a short-term rental, unless it actually converts to a hotel. And the reason for that is there's different building codes that regulate a hotel as compared to an apartment or mixed-use project. There's different exiting requirements and things like that. So some time ago, we put a 40% cap on those in the commercial zones. And of course, I, just like I mentioned, we don't allow them in the ADUs that are built after January 1, 2020. Not allowed within a structure that's unpermitted, like a shed or a C train in your backyard, hopefully. And we don't currently have any limits in apartment buildings that are zoned residential. So there's a lot of avenue, a lot of areas where we could probably be doing a little better. What we did do is we looked at a number of other communities inside our county, for the most part, and asked, what are you guys doing? What's, what's happening? And our staff did a great job doing some research there. And we are seeing quite commonly that the other communities just have an overall cap. They have a numerical cap. Passerables has that. Moral Bay's got that. Other communities have that. They also limit the number of people that can stay in a house at any one time. It's based on the bedroom count typically. They do have, some of them have distance limitations about how close they can be together. So there's not a thick cluster in a neighborhood that changes the neighborhood environment. They do require an application process typically with a fee and an annual review of that just to make sure they're continuing to meet their performance standards and bring in the annual transient occupancy tax. And a lot of these cities also have compliance through a third-party vendor. In other words, I hire a consultant that actually goes out and finds the rentals that aren't paying the TOT or aren't complying. They bring them to your attention and say, hey, by the way, we found three or four out there that are renting their houses. You should be aware of that. And they also help with the TOT collection. So that's a pretty neat thing. And they actually really help with cost recovery. So cities are doing that. They also require that in order to be active, these units have to have a minimum number of annual stays and pay a minimum amount of annual TOT. And that's a good thing, actually, because in Atascadero, you saw that number that we have that we've offered business license to. It's like 139. But if you go look at all these sites, there's probably only, you know, a handful that are active, 20, maybe 30. And so a lot of people come into municipality, they get their licensure, and so they just get their foot in the door so that they have something. But if we adopt regulations, we don't want that to be the case. They want, we want them to be active so that, you know, if they're not going to be active, someone else can take that spot. If we had limitations, for example, we want to, you know, if we're going to go through the trouble, we want them to actually be active. Some communities also require that these folks give written notification to their surrounding neighbors to say, hey, I'm going to set up a vacation rental. Here's who you can contact if there's trouble. Here's what's going on. Here's what I'm doing. And then some communities require owner occupancy in the home shares. They require also upon these things, starting up, a building inspection, a fire inspection to ensure that these units are actually safe, normal units that are safe for occupancy. And that's something that they get cost recovery for. It's built into that, that annual application fee. So looking at all those things that other communities do and looking at what we chatted about in our strategic planning, we came together with a few items just for us to discuss. And I think you could add a lot more. But, you know, what might be effective for Atascadero? We might want to have some zoning standards, and I'll talk about those in great detail in just a minute. We might want to have an application that has cost recovery along with that building and safety inspection. It's probably a good idea to have a vendor that does the tax collection and monitoring for us. And in fact, we already have a vendor that works for the city, HDL, that can offer those services to us. And we're talking to them now about what they might be able to offer us. And we might want to consider those that are already having vacation rentals and how they might be impacted by a new set of regulations. And should we grandfather them in? And perhaps we should, as long as they remain active and continue to be part of that, what we call active, bringing in TOT and maintaining an active vacation rental. So I'm going to go through those four items. Here's the first one, and some potential zoning standards. These are just examples. These are for our discussion and we can come back to these and talk about them. But based on our research, we found these are some of the criteria that might work in Atascadero. So for example, what about distancing? What about spacing in between these vacation rentals? We have a lot of different neighborhoods in Atascadero. We have a lot of areas that are closer in, that have smaller lots. And on those sites, it might be, you know, reasonable to say, okay, 500 feet. And that's about a distance of about six or eight properties away. On the bigger properties that are over an acre, you've got to get to 1,000 feet before you have that distance separation. Some of those lots on the west side, you know, they're 200 and 300 feet wide or more, especially in the residential suburban zone. And so then you need to get a greater distance between each of those properties. And that's something that really just helps maintain that neighborhood compatibility and keeps a neighborhood, a neighborhood and not a, you know, a short-term rental neighborhood. We wouldn't really put in place distancing in multifamily zones. Instead, you could put in a cap in a multifamily project, and those are some of the things that we talked about, and we could throw that out there. And then in commercial, again, looking at if you have a mixed-use project, limiting it to 40% of the total units so that it doesn't become a hotel and doesn't require that occupancy change in terms of building code differences. And then on, in terms of number of folks per, per unit, the standard that we're seeing is about two guests per bedroom plus two additional guests per, per household. And then, of course, we can put in place standards to make sure that the parking's maintained on the property, that the noise limitations are those that we uphold in our municipal code, that the property is maintained. And then a big one, too, is can we say that you can only do this in your primary residence? And so that we don't get corporations buying multiple units or that someone doesn't buy a house solely for the purpose of using it for an Airbnb and they never lived there? That is certainly an opportunity that we could do. I will say that right now, I think the larger percentage of Airbnb vacation rentals that we have in the city are not likely that people's primary residence, they are a separate residence. They are an accessory dwelling or they are something that, you know, someone owns four or five houses and they have those as, one or two of them as vacation rentals. That's what I'm experiencing as I see that. So number two, what would an application look like? We would have to set up a specific process and a fee. We would like to see a building and fire safety review as part of that. We'd like to make sure that their unit can meet the performance standards that we just mentioned, the distancing, whatever other standards we might want to put in place, the, the primary unit standard. We might want to put in place a public noticing when that goes in, not have it go to a hearing, per se, but... per se, but at least to notify the neighbors around them, here's what's happening at their property. And then along with that application process, an annual review, and making sure they're meeting those standards, and having a minimum number of stays per year, a minimum amount of TOT. And then again, you know, options for those that might transfer, sell a house, or, you know, be gone for a bit, or inheriting and selling a property. Could those be transferred? Certainly. I talked a little bit about the vendor, tax collection, and monitoring. These seem like a really good idea. It actually is a revenue positive and really helps save staff time as well. And like I said, there's vendors already that we have working for the city that already have this type of service, and they can help track the unpermitted short-term rentals and assist us with compliance by letting us know and do those kinds of things. And then lastly, what could we do with the existing ones? That would be totally up to us. You could have them remain regardless of any new zoning policies, as long as they maintain an active status, and then demonstrate some rental activity in the previous six months, demonstrate a minimum amount of TOT remittance within the previous year. You can do things like that. So those are basically the nuts and bolts of what I wanted to introduce. We can talk about a lot of other options. We can come back, if you'd like, at your wishes, with a more refined ordinance. We can do that on its own, or we can even group it in with a comprehensive zoning update that we're doing right now as a follow-up when we get our general plan going next year. We're going to also, and we're already working with a consultant now for a comprehensive zoning update, that's going to follow the general plan, and that's going to come through next year as well. But it's pretty easy to do this separately. What we would want to do is some outreach to the community. We haven't done that yet. We haven't let the community know that, hey, we're doing this, we're thinking about this. So I would advise that, and at least letting the existing folks know. And then maybe run this through the planning commission recommendation before coming back to city council. So that's how a process would look. That's what we could do for next steps. At this point, I'd like to open up the discussion and answer your questions and see if the public would like to weigh in on any of these things as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So I will, let's see, look to my council. We'll start with Councilmember Newsom.
It's so hard not to see you. I'm so used to talking directly to you. I know, there's a speaker in the way. We're not used to having it there. I guess we'd start back with what conversations we had at strategic planning. I want to make sure that we're abundantly fair to those existing short-term rental and vacation rentals. And one of the things that we discussed at the strategic planning was maybe to reach out to them, to get feedback, and have them weigh in on some of this policy that we're trying to establish. In strategic planning, I admitted I have an Airbnb not in this city, quite a ways away from here. So I'm a little bit versed on the operations of how that works with Airbnb, VRBO, as well as long-term residents. I think it's needed to have it, but what I'm worried about is, is how many people were contacted out of one hundred and thirty-nine on that list to participate tonight in feedback?
We haven't done outreach yet. We wanted to have this discussion, and then we could do another session and then do outreach to all those folks, so that has not happened yet.
My concern is having a conversation without even understanding how it affects our community before we even sit here and go through these items of what council should be putting in place for someone else's property rights.
Mayor Brotem Funk.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and then I have thoughts that we'll share later. First of all, you mentioned that there were one hundred and thirty-nine current folks that have licenses, or that have business licenses for short-term rentals. I feel like my sound's cutting in and out here.
You sound great.
Okay, good enough. Do you know how many of those are, are those current residents of the community who have licenses for properties in the community? And how many of those are from elsewhere?
I don't have those statistics for you this evening, but I can guarantee they're not all from a residence of the city of Tascadero.
So we've got some mixture of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And on the multifamily units, where these, what, as you've looked at how this works in other jurisdictions, to what extent are other jurisdictions placing restrictions on the multifamily units in order to preserve their multifamily housing stock for permit residents? And to what extent, if they don't, do people actually try to run Airbnbs out in apartment buildings and those, yeah, apartment complexes?
Where we're seeing that is in areas that are very heavily tourist driven. Morro Bay is a good example, where if they didn't have strong limits, they would have much higher numbers in their multifamily apartment projects. I don't know that that would be the drive here. I think the more of the desire here is to have that, more of that country, wine country, quiet, you know, location kind of setting. That's kind of our thing in the North County. So we don't see a whole lot in a Tascadero that are in apartment complexes. We tend to see them on a single-family properties. But other communities do have limitations. They have strong caps, and they have strong distance limitations. And those are the things that have to go into place in those heavy tourist communities to make sure they maintain their housing.
And to what, this may be, maybe not a question directly for you, but for, might be Director Vanish out there. But to what extent, if you have, Tascadero had the experience that we see in parts of Paso Robles, where there are entire streets that are essentially non-residential, they're become Airbnb in house after house after house, because they didn't put these, any restrictions in place before all of that had happened? To what extent does that interfere with our goal to be an authentic community as we market ourselves to others and create a resident-serving experience that is something that others from outside of the community might want to enjoy?
It's difficult to actually really quantify that, and answer that question directly. But obviously, it does change the feeling and spirit of neighborhoods when you've got a high density of vacation rentals. We don't anticipate that would really happen in a Tascadero, except in a downtown situation where people want to stay in that kind of a situation, because we just don't have that kind of a tourism drive in a Tascadero. But it possibly could happen, and it certainly does change the character, and it takes away from a certain kind of local feel. It certainly does. And that's perspective, and it's based on opinion. It's not something that you can quantify perfectly. And in fact, I think one of the things that I didn't mention in the presentation, that was a question from council early on, is are we receiving a lot of complaints from these units? We're really not. We receive a couple. I spoke to code enforcement today. I spoke to my planning team today. You know, we've looked at this, and we, I can't say that we have a large number of singled-out vacation rentals that are creating significant issues. There's a couple. Certainly, there's a couple. But there's a lot of other complaints from residential laborers, too, where people are fighting with each other. So this doesn't stand out as a category that is substantial.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're all familiar with a couple of, at least one code enforcement situation in some longstanding, because these situations can be difficult. And so thank you for anticipating my next question about the frequency of that. Do we have any breakdown to that end of the one hundred and thirty-nine units? Between how many are home, roughly, how many are home stay type units, where the owner is still living in the building, where, you know, if the party gets out of control, the person you're going to wake is the owner? That's, you know, that is self-limiting in its risks to the rest of the community versus the whole unit vacation rentals, where the owner is probably elsewhere?
Do you recall if we separated that out, Alexandria? I don't recall if we went to that extent. Sorry to call. So I don't, oh, maybe she's going to come all the way up and speak. I didn't mean to do that. Alexandria is our senior planner, and she's did a lot of research on this to pull this together, but I don't recall we had those statistics. But anyway, Alexandria Fowler.
Hi, thank you, Alexandria Fowler. So the way that we permit right now through the business license, it doesn't have a delineation how people are using it. So if it's whether or not a vacation rental or a home share, so we don't collect that data at this point.
Thank you. Something we might want to continue that, we might want to adjust that, just to give, while we have this under consideration, to be able to gather that data, at least for future requests. That might be very helpful. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I have several questions. Along those lines, I know HDL, you mentioned HDL gathering some of the data on this regarding the TOT collected. If we were to pursue an ordinance, there's other firms that kind of do more of the enforcement type, you know, identifying noncompliant properties, that sort of thing. Because I assume one of the ways to identify what Mayor Brotem Funk was asking about is, you know, just going on those sites, Airbnb, VRBO, and see if they're being advertised as whole house, or guest house, or, you know, spare bedroom. You know, because that would, you know, obviously, if you're staying in a guest room, you don't have the whole house. If you're staying in an ADU, you don't have the main house. But are they being advertised? And we don't have any idea of that, right?
We don't at this time, other than, yeah, we could do that, you know, random research.
And in terms of self-limits on this, I assume that certain neighborhoods that have HOAs probably have rules about this that don't allow, like, let's say, you know, the lakes or Dove Creek or Apple Colony, some of the newer, larger subdivisions. I assume they may have their own rules that preclude or limit this short-term rentals?
They can if they wish, and some do, yes.
Okay, got it. Also, in terms of apartments, you know, we have the limits you mentioned in the report, but if, let's say, I, you know, occupy a two-bedroom apartment, currently I could rent out one of those unless my landlord prohibits it?
Yes, unless it's within your, you know, your rental policies, that you can't, certainly.
Got it. And then you mentioned, right now, somebody, all they got to do is pull a commercial business license, and you mentioned it being under the category of home occupancy permit, which, if they don't occupy the home, it's, I guess, maybe not technically a home occupancy, but that's how it's categorized right now?
It is if it's in a residential district. The only way we can issue a business license, a commercial business license to someone who has a residence or in a residential district is through the home occupation permit process. So that's how we do that. Now, if they were in a commercial district in a residential unit, this in a mixed-use project, might be different. But now if they have a commercial business, like they're a rental agency, and they decide to do a vacation rental, they might pull a business through their rental agency, but the location of their rental is residential, and it may not come through as a home occupation. It might be a commercial business license. So it all depends on the parameters of where it's based and where, who's paying the bill.
Okay. There's nothing in the phraseology governing home occupancy permits to say you should occupy the home?
No. A home occupation business license is simply issuing a commercial type of business license or a business license to someone who operates a business out of their home, whether they're selling something from their home, or that they're providing a service, or whether they're doing something like a vacation rental.
Right. But I mean, in general, if I'm running a home-occupying business, whether if I'm an architect, or I'm a travel agent, or whatever, I might do that. I mean, I do it from my home. There's nothing in the wording that implies that it's my home, that I live there.
No, it just implies that you're doing it out of a home.
A home. Okay. Not my home, so to speak. Okay. And, okay, in terms of the, in terms of the numbers, because one of the things, you know, is looking at how other cities went through this process, and they went through great machinations, what's, I guess I understand it theoretically, what the idea behind limiting numbers or distances, but if everybody, if this only was allowed in homeowner-occupied situations, that really wouldn't be a factor then, would it? That was if I rent out my ADU, and Mark rents out his ADU next door, and Heather rents out her ADU next door, that's not the same impact as three houses in a row that are unoccupied except for short-term rentals?
Correct. It's still a minor impact, but not as significant if it was the whole household, and someone's over there having a big party, a retirement celebration, a wedding, you know?
Right, right. Okay. Got it. I have a lot of comments.
On that last answer, if I may, Councilmember, I think to really be clear, I think there is a difference for two main reasons. One, you maintain a housing unit because a person's still living in it as their primary residence. I think one of the, I'm sorry, you, thank you, I'm sorry, Mayor Brotem. I think there are kind of two key differences, to be a little clearer, to the point. You do maintain a housing unit if you have a policy that your primary residence must be what's rented, because it's where someone actually lives. So, and then the second, one of the fears is leaving trashcans out, or a lack of community, or a lack of respect for neighbors that you might have in owner, investor-owned units. Whereas if it's your primary home, you live with your neighbors a majority of the year, you have to make sure that you're renting it responsibly. So communities have turned to that as a way to maintain housing stock and ensure quality of renters in communities.
Okay, thank you. In terms of like an initial inspection, so let's say somebody, we have an ordinance, and if somebody applies to have a short-term rental, and we send out a code enforcement person to do an initial inspection, and it turns out the person is advertising a, you know, converted garage as the unit in question, and it's an, you know, an illegally converted garage, that would be the kind of thing we would address as part of the inspection program, I assume?
Yes, and sometimes we can even look at that without an inspection process, because we look up the records that we have in-house to determine what structure is. So some of that can be done without going out. But in the end, it's always best to go and take a look at the situation.
And right now, if somebody gets a commercial business license for doing this, just as if they did a home occupancy for something, do they renew that license annually as part of, just as a commercial business license? Or is that a one-time?
They do need to review it annually, or renew it annually, pay an annual fee.
Okay. And, okay, I'll have other comments and maybe questions after public comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Darris.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got several questions myself. As we know, Airbnbs have gotten really popular over the years. A lot of times, it's the most economical way to stay in a place. And I think as time goes, you know, like you said, Paso Robles has a cap on the number, and once that cap is reached, if they haven't already reached that, then I think Tascadero is going to be the next choice, and then we're going to get to that point where, so it's going to get, it could potentially become a problem. What I, as I was reading through this, I'm looking at this from both sides, and I can see that this is one of those unique things where the city will benefit from this, obviously from the TOT tax, and some of the residents will benefit from it because they're making money themselves. But there's also some other unintended consequences, I think, that may happen. And I'll get, I'll try to get to some of those if I can clarify that. One of the questions that I have, and this has anything to do with unintended consequences, but, and was kind of touched on a second ago here. You mentioned that ADUs that were built after 2020 cannot be used as a short-term rental. Okay, that's pretty clear. If somebody built an ADU after 2020, can the owner live in that ADU and then use the house as a short-term rental?
Yes, that's a creative solution. They can.
Okay, they can. The next question I have is on parking. So there's houses, because it was stated in there that parking needs to be provided, which makes sense. But if you have a single-family house, regardless of the number of bedrooms, you're required to be able to park two cars. And sometimes it has to have driveway, and not just in the, you have to, anyway, you have to have adequate parking, and usually that adequate parking accounts for two cars. But if you have a house that's being used as a short-term rental that is, say, five bedrooms, you could potentially have, say, a family reunion and five couples that are renting cars, and now you've got five cars. So how is it going to be regulated that you're, that the person you're, that the person operating the short-term rental needs to, how can it be regulated to say, look, you can only have two cars? Whether, no matter how many couples or people there's going to be staying there. I mean, that, that's a concern that I have, because I can see that happening where they're renting it with five couples, and three of those cars are parked in the street.
That may be difficult to regulate, and it's certainly a possibility. Typically, on these larger homes, they have much larger properties with big driveways and big areas, and it doesn't become an issue. I think in our regulations, we would require that all of their parking be maintained within their property. And I think that's where we would draw that line, because otherwise it gets, it does get very challenging to say, hey, your parking has to be within your garage, or your, your, your regulated parking spaces, because yeah, there's so many different unique situations.
Okay. On the minimum number of stays, in the report, it said that we would mandate that if you're going to have a short-term rental license, then you have to show that you're, you have 10 stays a year. You're renting it for 10 different stays a year. Is that correct?
And that's just an example number.
Okay, so where I was, again, I'm looking, I'm trying to look at this from both sides. So at, from the city side, I'm like, that's great, we can get 10 stays. That means we get TOT tax from 10 different times. If I'm a homeowner, and one of the things we talked about when this came up in March, or whenever it was, you know, I look at, you know, certain homeowners, maybe myself, maybe not. And I go, well, I don't want my neighbors to rent, to, to know that they're moving out, and they're going to rent their house as a short-term rental, and I gotta deal with parties every other weekend or something. So we have this distance thing. So, okay, well, I'm going to get a license, and I know this is addressed in a tool. I'm going to get a license, and that prevents anybody from else doing it. However, in order to do so, I have to now show that I'm having 10 stays. Okay, so if I saw, if I then, at the end of the year, or however it's going to be collected, say, well, I had 10 stays, they were one day at a time, one-day stays each time. So I will pay the TOT tax on a one-day stay throughout the year. I'll consider that a tax to guarantee that my neighbors don't do it. So the question is, can we, if we're going to do this 10 stays, should there be a minimum number of days per stay? That benefits the city from saying, we know we're going to collect a minimum amount of TOT tax, and it's not just going to be one day. And it also maybe protects the neighbors, or protects the person that wants to use their place as a short-term rental.
We can design this however you like. You bring up some good points, but I don't know if anyone would go to that extent, just to keep another person out, but it's a possibility. And it certainly can, you never know. So we can do-
It sounds like Councilmember Dara's mind.
Just might.
But, and these are the things that we have to think about if we design these parameters, you know, what is, what is a minimum amount of TOT? Should it be a minimum number of days a year instead of stays a year? These are different ways we can look at it.
Yeah, and I think, I think that that's important, because I think there's, there, again, it protects the person, you know, maybe the person, the legitimate person that wants to do it responsibly, versus a person that just wants to make sure their neighbors aren't doing, right? So I think there's, needs to be balance there. And again, if I wanted to guarantee that none of my neighbors are going to do it, I'd happily pay a one-day, you know, 10 days versus TOT, just to make sure they're not going to happen, if that was my goal. And on, on that note, multifamily was brought up. And in, in the report, it said that that's a scenario where there isn't a distance separation. So again, if, 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 whether it's the owner of the apartment complex, or maybe an individual that says, well, I'm going to rent 15 or 20 apartments, and I'm going to use those as short-term rentals. And if they're clustered more or less together, or several of them are clustered, and there's one poor family that's living amongst these short-term rentals, that's going to ruin their experience in, in their living conditions. And so I think something like, so maybe there needs to be a separation in apartment complexes to some degree, somehow. I don't know how that's going to be formulated, but I see that as potentially being a problem, because whether it's the owner of the complex, or somebody coming along and saying, I'm going to, you know, rent the block one way or another, and, and I, you know, again, protecting the people that live there that want to have a peaceful quality of life, this, this could, could have an effect on that. The just, okay, anyway, I guess I didn't have as many questions as I thought I had, but those are the big ones that I wanted to get now. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to have a a real strong understanding of primary, use of primary residence. And in, in all the different variations, because one thing I understand that a home stay is somebody renting a room in a primary residence. So that's subject to TOT, but what we're saying is that we would not most likely make them subject to whatever, you know, ordinance we're coming up with. That's a possibility.
With a home stay?
With a home stay.
Correct.
But that's still subject to TOT.
Correct.
Okay, so that's one use of home stay. What are other, what are other uses of home, no, I'm sorry, what are other uses of primary residence when it comes to talking about short-term rentals? Beyond just renting a room?
Well, someone could still have a primary residence, and they could go away for a month, and they could rent their house out while they're on vacation, and that's originally how Airbnb started. So that can still work. It's not as common.
You could also home swap.
Yeah.
You can home swap. So I'm going on vacation in a place where you live, and we then we switch homes for two weeks, and you know, that's another option, I guess, that you could use your primary residence for.
Okay. And then would there be some type of limit on, like, how would we know for sure that was somebody's primary residence? That they didn't just say, oh, yes, this is my primary residence, but I'm assuming it would be maybe number of days rented, that whatever company we hired would be monitoring, or how would we know that this didn't simply become a investor-owned rental?
Well, I mean, through the tax assessor, we know what their primary residence is and what their other residences are. So they would have to demonstrate that, that that's their primary residence, if that's the way the council wanted to go.
So, and I agree with the director, but I have a little experience with this in my former life. I have a little experience with this in my former life, as you all know. There's a few things. So when you apply for your license, you would demonstrate, you, you'd show, you'd declare the homeowner's exemption, which if that's not your home, that's a crime. Two, you would show voter registration and your tax returns. Those are things we required. If you wanted to be that firm on what your primary residence was. Then every year, the enforcement software can look at how many days your residence was rented. And in some cases, perhaps, depending on how the ordinance is listed, how many times you tried to rent it, because you shouldn't try and rent it more than six months and a day, right? Otherwise, it's not your primary residence.
Five months and 20 minutes.
Or five months, exactly, mayor. And so, yeah, and so there's software that we can actually check that, and to do so is a violation and a penalty. And you could lose your permit, or count that as a, you know, warning, or, but that's how we did it. And as a matter of fact, we did catch a few people. It's interesting, too. Neighbors can be very neighborly if you're renting your house too much and turning it, and they're very free to share information and keep track of how long, often you're there and you're not there. And we actually went through this in court, and the court ruled that our ordinance was valid. Mr. Fleishman was the attorney on that case, based on neighborhood observation and what the software showed. So it does have teeth, and it does work.
Okay. So then, if somebody has, and I know we've got pre and post 2020. Let's, let's just go pre 2020. If somebody has a main house and one ADU, and they live in the main house, they rent the ADU, would that still be considered like a primary residence, or is that considered, I mean, because they would be on-site? And they're renting, you know, part of their primary residence, even though it's an ADU?
That distinction could be up to us as a municipality, how we handle that. Typically, we would say the primary residence is the primary residence and not the ADU, but again, those are the scenarios that we can stipulate.
But we could define it how, in, in the definitions that we, okay. And then, of course, if they live in the ADU and rent the primary residence, that would be obvious. But then if we had something like a less than six months and one day, but if they're in the ADU, so I guess these are just things that we would have to, to work through. Okay. I think those were my main questions, trying to ferret that out right now. Any other questions before going to public? Councilmember Newsom?
My question goes back to the multifamily residence in our general plan. In our general plan, we changed some of the zonings in our local residential areas, where there was single-family zoning on one side, and then across the street was multifamily. How are we going to address this if we were to move forward with an ordinance? Would they be grandfathered in, or how are we doing that at the same time as the general plan?
So these standards wouldn't be based on a preference between multifamily and single-family zoning. They would differ between a multifamily unit and a single-family unit. So there's a lot of single-family units in multifamily zoning districts. They'd be treated like a single-family unit with these regulations, unless they're an apartment project or multifamily project. So the zoning wouldn't change it unless it's a commercial zone. That's the only, that's the only big distinction.
You, you have a minimum distance determination between multifamily districts, single-family districts. Those would be impacted.
The distancing is in the areas that are either less than an acre or greater than an acre, but the distance, the other parameter where there's no distancing for a multifamily project is for a multifamily building, not necessarily a multifamily zoning property. That's how the distinction is supposed to be.
So the multifamily districts does not
Oh, I see. They, in the staff report, it does say multifamily districts, doesn't it? I'm looking at the page now. So the intent there is multifamily building, not a multifamily district, because we have a lot of multifamily districts that have single-family homes in them. And so the idea is that you treat a single-family home differently than an apartment building. So I think that's
And we made changes to that.
It really should say multifamily building on that line.
A multifamily building?
Page 71 of your staff report, my apologies.
And what's, can you define what a multifamily building is?
Sure, it's a, it's a building that has multiple units in it. It may only have two units, it could have 20 units in it. It's in a multi, so our, our building code actually defines whether a building is a multifamily building or a single-family building. So an ADU and a house is not a multifamily building. A multifamily building is when there's multiple units of the same size and structure that are in a multifamily district. Usually, they're, they're four or more. That's typically the layout.
So on some of those multifamily areas, or districts, we allow high-density development. So if somebody were to knock down their existing building, they could put in a multiplex, correct? A duplex? And then they would have different parameters if they knocked down a single family and built a duplex or triplex?
Yes.
In this regard?
And again, these are only samples in here. So what we're saying is that in a multifamily apartment project, let's say you had 10 units. What we're saying is that in a project like that, you probably should only have one vacation rental. I think we're saying, you know, roughly 5% to 10% are one per multifamily building. And that would be your, essentially set up your distance parameter right there, if you limit it to a percentage.
When we were going through the general plan update, we addressed some areas that had issues with trashcans, parking, things like that. They had a high, high density, weren't able to accommodate the additional traffic. And in this case, if we were to allow a short-term rental ordinance in there, parking would be an impact. Is there certain areas of our town that we wouldn't allow that? Because we've changed that access?
We haven't gone to that extent of evaluation to say that that would be a significant impact that's different, or we'd have to disallow that in that certain area.
Okay. And then the next thing is, is we, do we have a map of the 139 short-term or home shares, or whatever we call them? Yeah, home shares are pulling the same license as a short-term rental at this time?
We can create a map of where all those rentals are. We, we don't have that for you tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Dara.
Yeah, just to follow up on, Charles had mentioned about HOAs, and I just wanted to make a comment on that. If, I believe that if complexes, whether it's condos or apartments, or even single-family residential developments that were built 15 to 20 years ago, probably do not address any, I mean, they may address a rental in a certain aspect, but certainly they don't address short-term rentals. So I don't know if this is going to be an issue, or what the city can even do about that, but just as noticed, anybody watching, that if you think it's going to be an issue, the CCNRs would need to be amended, and that's sometimes very difficult to do. But yeah, I, I know that my HOA CCNRs probably don't address it at all. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we go to the public?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Is it safe to assume that of the 139 units, in terms of the amount of the one, of generating TOT, that the ones that generate the most are the ones that are, let's say, non, you know, people that don't live there? Because if they don't live there, their whole purpose owning it is going to be renting it out. And so is it safe to say that the bulk of the TOT is coming from, you know, whole-house rentals in effect?
It does appear to be that way when we do random searches and look around on the sites. It does appear that these, you know, a larger luxurious home is, you know, they, they can rent for $400 a night, and that's going to be a big chunk. Yes.
Right. Well, and I would assume those folks are trying to rent out as much as possible, whereas if I occasionally rent out a guest room, you know, I may not feel, you know, compelled to do it very often. And so it would be logical that those whole home, whole-house rentals are more expensive, and their, their incentive is to do it as often as possible.
Yes, all the time. A lot of these places are booked all the time. We see that.
Got it.
And they become a permanent vacation house.
Got it. Exactly. Thank you.
All right. We ready to go to public? All right. Go ahead and open up public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please come forward now. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Osland, once again. Kudos to council. This discussion's one of the better discussions that I've heard in the last 14 years, going back and forth on any subject. So I appreciate that. I think some great points have been brought up. Distance, 500, 500 feet. Well, 300, 100 yards is 300, you know, feet, so you're into a a football field and a half away, if you're going to regulate where your short-term rentals can be. For instance, Councilmember Dara, you brought up a great point. I could move into my ADU and rent out my house. That might be an option, because I can't rent my ADU out, because it's after 2020. I'm thrilled that our city manager used another city from this area, because the two cities that were brought up are in fiscal dire straits, and I think comparisons to some that are actually more able to understand what they're doing is way better. So another comparison from another city makes more sense, rather than the one in the north and the one in the coast. I even believe that we have loaned money to one of those cities to pay their bills at one point. In terms of apartments, I don't want to pick on anybody, but if I went across the street close to a gas station building over there, and 40% of those were rented out as short-term rental, I would be upset as a resident here. And the reason I'd be upset as a resident here is this council has discussed numerous times about workforce housing, affordable housing, and we're taking that away if we allow that much in the area, because it jacks the prices up. And normally, an Airbnb is cheaper than a hotel, and that's why people rent them. It's great that we're getting TOT, but I think we have to be very, very, very careful in what we do there. The best thing that's come out of this discussion is how do we do some form of a regulation so corporations don't buy up all our houses in the city and rent them out, and that really goes back to we would be in trouble again for workforce housing, and we do need that, we do need some reasonable housing. Real quick, I did have an employee whose mother had a house in a Tascadero. She did rent out a room frequently, and that's how she was able to continue to pay her mortgage on the house. So I think all these points are valid, but I think there's things to be, to consider. And I think council needs the direct staff to shoot this back again, and have a lot more answers and statistics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Any at all? All right, seeing, then we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring that back to council for discussion. What I'd like to do is, why don't we pull up, well, first of all, let me ask, do we have a consensus that we should probably have some type of short-term rental ordinance? Like, let me just get a consensus first, and then, well, do we have a consensus that we should do some type of? Okay, so we've got five of us saying, yes, we should do something. What I'd like to do is start with maybe the first slide that talks about zoning and kind of go through it piece by piece, if that would be okay with you, Director, and Mayor Protim Funk, you had a, maybe a pointer question?
Yes, I wondered if, before we just dive into the particulars, if we could talk a bit about the goals? Because I think that we have, based on our earlier conversations, that maybe Because I think that we have, based on our earlier conversations, that maybe we have some agreement about consensus across the council about what the goals are. And because, and the goals drive different policy decisions. I think perhaps we prioritize those goals differently. But that, that there's a lot of, if we're clear about the goals, the why of what we're doing, then it's easier to agree, meet agreements about what's the best way to manage that particular thing for our community and which things from other communities might not be applicable to us because those communities have different situations and they have different goals for their short-term rental management.
Councilmember Newsom.
I'm in consensus that we do need a short-term rental ordinance, but I don't think that we have all of the information that we need to be able to draft that. And one of those cases is the home shares are pulling the same applications as the short-term rentals, and we don't know what that percentage is. We don't know where they're located in our city, nor do we know if they're investor-owned. So in order for us to make an ordinance, I think we need to have some of that additional data and research done by staff.
Okay. Other thoughts before we get into this?
I kind of concur with Mayor Protem Funk in the sense of, I, I mean, I'm the one who's asked for more, you know, more than a few years to have this subject brought before us formally. And I did so with two thoughts in mind, and, but the primary one, and going to her point, is that if you have a house, you know, a primary residence, let's say there's no ADU on the property, a primary, just a house, and somebody owns that house, they don't live there, and they rent it out on, as a short-term rental. That is a commercial lodging establishment. It's not a house. It's a commercial lodging establishment, also known as a hotel, in a residential neighborhood. And I don't think that's fair to the other neighbors. That's always been my number one concern. On the other hand, I don't believe most of this other stuff is necessary because if you have somebody on site to handle complaints, you don't need minimum distances. You don't need numbers, restrictive numbers, et cetera. So my thought is keep it as simple as possible with an end goal of protecting neighborhood, neighbors, neighboring property owners, neighboring homeowners. And so that goes, Mayor Protem Funk's question in terms of what is our purpose?
You literally, like, if you made that motion, I would go for that right now. Because what you're doing, I think, when you have a primary residence, and, and we would have to deal, obviously, with grandfathering and all of that. That's, that's a, that's a given. And I know that's a concern of yours, and it's a concern of all of ours because people have applied for licenses, they've been given a certain right. And even though we're saying going forward, we don't think that's best for our community, they've been given that right. They should not, that should not be taken away. So we have to figure out what that grandfathering looks like. But I agree, the goal is, I think, twofold beyond what you said with the neighborhood compatibility, but it's also preserving, as Mr. Osland said, as many of us have said, it is preserving housing stock. And so if you have something where it must be a primary residence, or somebody must be on site, you know, they're living in the ADU, renting the primary residence, or they're in the primary residence and they're renting a pre-2020 ADU, that solves a lot of these problems that we don't then need to, you know, have staff doing extra work and charging extra fees and all of that, and, you know, measuring, is it, is it five hundred feet or is it four hundred and seventy-two feet? And we don't need to worry about that type of thing. So I would, I would say that based on our conversations, those are our two main goals. Are there other goals that you see, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, when I was looking at this, I actually articulated seven things that I think are our goals for this. Preserving of neighborhood quality of life is the number one, and is both, the two of you both discussed. And closely related to that, keeping a Tascadero authentic in its character as a resident-serving community. Allowing our resident owners flexibility, number three, allowing resident owners flexibility in the way they use their properties. Number four being preserving our affordable housing stock. Number five being discouraging speculators from buying up properties in our community and converting them to short-term rental use. Six being facilitating the collection of transient occupancy tax for the city. So if the taxes are due, they should be fairly paid. And the seventh would be having something that is enforceable and, and not something that will be, where the spirit of what we're trying to do can be reasonably enforced and not be sabotaged by people who want to game the system.
I think you've taken what we concisely said and drew it out, which is a lovely picture. So I don't think we disagree on, on much. Are we, how, how is everybody feeling about the, the basis from which we start to make this?
I, I think, I think it's.
Not make a decision tonight, but give some guidance.
No, I, I think we're, we're definitely on it, but, but I want to make sure it's also addressed as condos and apartments. And you did mention a percentage, I think. But I think what we just, what was just discussed here a few seconds ago was about single-family residents and how that's addressed. But apartments and condos needs to be clearly defined on how.
And that's, that's in there as well, in that five to ten. We can give different direction on that. But for sure, that's part of the whole, the whole thing. So, yes, Councilmember Newsom.
I think if we're going to require property owners or have someone on the premise, it's going to take some of the rights of other property owners away. And having stayed at multiple Airbnbs and short-term rentals, they've only stayed on one property where a landowner is on site. So we are going to take those rights away from everybody else that chooses to do what they wish with their rental property.
And I think, and this is what Councilmember Borbo pointed out, is that when you buy a property in a single-family zoning district, you do not have a right to a commercial, you know, to basically having a hotel room. That isn't a right that comes with buying a home in a single-family zoned residence, or a multifamily for that matter. It's something that has started to, to grow over the last couple of decades, but single-family housing does not come with the property right of renting as a vacation rental, as a hotel room. So I, I would see that differently.
Can I, can I touch on that a bit?
Hold on.
I, I want to just touch on it, and then I'm going to let it go. But I'm going to say, the reason Airbnbs and short-term rentals came about is due to COVID. Okay? A lot of us wanted to keep our family close. We didn't want to travel and be separated. The second thing that came about with COVID is evictions. We lost, as property owners who have rental properties, lost our rights to evict the tenants. And that has allowed them a safe haven, that has allowed them to not pay rent. For some people, it's been a year. So having the ability to rent with short-term rentals allows you the opportunity to collect revenue on a rental property. It reduces your risk because it's managed by a third property, third party. You screen and you do credit application checks more than you do the single person that walks up to you and says, I want to rent your house. I'm sorry, I have more rights with my property than you do. So when we have an ordinance that requires somebody living on a dwelling that is a primary residence, it is taking the rights to do what we choose to do with a property that we may not have bought as an investment, as a commercial hotel. It also takes away our rights to do what we choose with our properties, and we do have a right to rent them.
Councilmember Darris.
And, yeah, and I want to say, Councilmember Newsom, that I, I totally agree with you on property rights. I'm a hundred percent behind people having rights for their properties. However, I also agree with what Charles said, or what he touched on earlier about the type of business that you're having, whether you're an architect or, you know, whatever it is you do as your business in the home. Renting the house out as, as a, as a rental is akin to a hotel. Same thing as if somebody has a large barn on their property, whether it's on the half an acre or ten acres, wherever. If it's not zoned to be an auto shop, then you, you, I don't, you do not have the rights as the property owner to say, well, I own this property, I have the rights, I'm renting that out, and somebody's going to put their auto shop in there. And that's, that's not how, that's not how the system works. Even, you know, it's, it's kind of like I'm saying two things at the same time. Yeah, I believe in property rights, but I also believe in rules, regulations. And in this case, it's kind of the same thing. Where do we draw the line? Okay, you can use this as a hotel, which is a commercial entity in a non-commercial zone, but your neighbor can't rent the barn to have an auto shop, or a wood shop, or cabinet shop, or whatever it might be. So I, I think that line needs to be drawn, needs to, maybe it needs to be defined a little better, figure out how, how that's going to get rectified. But, but there is, there is a similarity, and it's going to possibly open up a can of worms if it's not addressed properly.
And I can certainly understand and appreciate your viewpoint as a property owner and talking to many property owners who have had issues with renting their properties during COVID, particularly during COVID, and then you don't have the rental income. Certain people got protected, other people didn't. And when you live in a state like California, we are subject to certain regulations that make it difficult, sometimes feel as impossible to do certain things that maybe in other states you're, you're able to do, particularly as a landowner. So as my predecessor used to say, I'm sorry, you live in California. But that's just sometimes, sometimes how it is, and, and we're having to deal with that. So. Mayor Protem.
I would concur with Councilmember Darris's comments that, that we, we're thinking about that just because you own this property doesn't mean you can do anything you want with it, including operating a business that's not allowed in that zoning. You know, your auto shop, it's a good example. And even if you still live in that, live in that house and aren't renting it to someone, you can't decide that now I'm going to run my auto refinishing business out of my driveway and leave all of those smells and odors and things to neighbors. You know, there's a point at which things move from being hobbies to being businesses, and we make those distinctions all the time. And I think the reason, just to take it up to the, you know, ten thousand foot level for a second, the reason that this becomes something that we pay attention to with whole-house rentals of, of homes is that this is a use of a property that is profitable to the property owner and creates costs and, and impacts that largely hit other people, particularly if it's a property owner who is not on site. So if, if you have a party house, that may generate great revenue for you if you're the owner of the property, but it might be, you know, what, A G double on the neighbors and be very damaging to the neighborhood quality of life that we're trying to preserve. So we have reasons in terms of our overall goals or what we're trying to do and what we've set out in the general plan to, the community we're trying to create, to have some balance with this. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to address Councilmember Newsom's concern. I mean, and, and Councilmember Darris and Mayor Protem Funk partially addressed this in regards to, and, and you did as well in terms of you don't have an inherent right to turn your property into certain things, whether it's a, you know, mechanic's garage or a hotel. But as a firm believer in, in letting people exercise as much property right as possible, I think one of the things we do here is, when we get to the question of grandfathering, is I, I would agree that we, you know, we grandfather in those folks that currently do this. We don't pull the rug out from under them, but we, we basically provide notice that going forward, you can't buy a house in a Tascadero in a, in a residential neighborhood and turn it into a hotel. So that we're not, you know, so you know, buying the house, no. You very clearly do not have the right going forward to turn this property into a hotel. And if you've already done so, we, you know, would consider in, in the course of an ordinance like this to grandfather that in. Because neighbors have property rights too. And I always look at things in terms of what is the reasonable expectation of me buying the property? And what's the reasonable expectation of the person next door who, if they did their due diligence, asked, what is this property zoned for? You know, this vacant lot behind me, what is it zoned for, et cetera? And, and if the answer was, oh, well, your neighbors are all single-family residential lots, then that's what, when I buy the house, that's what I expect to be there. And so I don't think we're, we're taking away a property right. But to be fair to those that have already done this, I would agree to grandfather them in as long as they own that house. And that anybody else buying it knows and understands that a Tascadero has a new STR ordinance, that's not allowed anymore.
Councilmember Newsom.
I want to ask a couple more questions since Mr., uh, Councilmember Borbo brought up some things. I want to talk about unintended consequences. Having vacation rentals and Airbnbs does create jobs. We are about creating jobs, affordable jobs for those that are cleaners, landscapers, and things like that. So there will be unintended consequences to some additional ordinances. On the basis of those that are already grandfathered in, are you going to allow those that have already pulled applications to be grandfathered?
I think that we need, you know, we need to discuss grandfathering as to the where and the whens and effective dates and that sort of thing. But conceptually, I'm okay with, you know, grandfathering existing things because I'm not, I'm not opposed to people doing this. I think it's great if somebody can make some extra revenue to help pay the mortgage, you know, by renting out a guest room or renting out their ADU, or, you know, that sort of thing. I, I'm not against STRs at all, as long as there's an onsite person to handle complaints and, and keep things under control. And, and so that essentially more, it's more of, there's a guest in my home or there's a guest on my property. So, but as far as specifics of grandfathering, I, I, you know, think we'd have to discuss that, the five of us, see what we come up with.
Okay, so I, I think what I'm hearing is certainly Councilmember Borbo and I seem to kind of be on the same page with this. And I'm wondering what the, the rest of you think. Rather than needing to go through the whole zoning and number of feet and things like that, are, do, would we have some consensus to have staff look at crafting an ordinance that would be where you have to have, you know, an, an owner on site or have it be a primary residence? So meaning where, you know, maybe somebody lives there, they go on vacation for a month, you know, somebody stays there for twenty-nine days, to be clear, twenty-nine days, but this person isn't regularly renting the space out, or the home stays, or maybe they live in the ADU, they're renting the primary residence, or vice versa, if it's pre-2020. But where we've got either someone on site or it's a primary residence?
I agree. But the primary residence thing, I think, can get a little confusing in that somebody owns a home on the East Coast and one on the West Coast, and they spend, you know, maybe six months in each. How do you define which one's the primary residence? I mean, it is a primary residence, but they're here for six months. And then, as it was stated, you can't rent it for more than five months and twenty-nine days or something to that effect.
Well, I think if, if it's six months and one day, we're not the kind of city that pounces on somebody. We, we, we come in when you're renting it for eleven and a half months, and you're only here for two weeks at Christmas. So.
But again, you go back to the issue, there's somebody on site to handle complaints. In other words, my, you know, we live next door, you rent out the whole house, and there's a loud party. I don't want to go, well, hell, Mark's in, Mark's in New York right now. You know, if, that's the point. It's like, you know, you want to go pound on the door and go, hey.
May I ask, I, I can hear where the council's headed, but there's a little nuance I'm not following. So your primary residence is, is easy to prove because you certify it through your homeowner's exemption, and your neighbors know you. They know you live there, or you don't. Even in that, usually as part of your annual application process, you designate a responsible person. So if you're not home, your neighbors know, or the police department knows who we can call if there's a problem. So that's part of the annual application process that you designate. So a person living there, does that mean I could have an investor-owned property that I rent long-term? And then they rent out rooms or they can leave? Those, that, that's, I'm not familiar with. I think what you're saying is it's an investor, no, no investor-owned property. It's your residence. And when you are gone for three months, four months, there's a person responsible to handle complaints or issues within a certain amount of time, they can respond. That's usually how it's handled through the app. Is that what I think you're saying?
Or if you're renting your ADU, or you live in the ADU and you're renting out the primary residence, and not, in that case, then you would be on site and.
Yeah. And the other clarifying question I wanted to ask you about grandfathering. So there's the grandfathering of the right to use your property. Then there's the grandfathering of, there's these operational things we now do in our short-termal ordinance. Are you grandfathered from those? So I would not recommend that. So if you are an investor-owned property and you're going to grandfather that in, you still would need to do the annual process, pay the annual fee, be subject to if you put in a complaint measure where after a certain number of complaints, you lost your license. I would recommend that that is still subject to all permit holders when you go through your first permit after the ordinance takes effect. So you'd just be grandfathering the use?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to clarify.
And it really sounds like, since we have very few problems, that is, I, you know, probably not going to affect many of those property owners. So that's a good thing. But yes.
Yeah. And, and when I said I, I want. Yeah. And when I said I want, you know, this to be as easy as possible, it's like, I do agree, though, that it makes sense to have an initial inspection. We don't currently do that. But I think that makes sense even just for life and safety, that people aren't renting out illegally converted garages and, you know, unfinished attics and whatever, you know. And but then, you know, we don't need an annual inspection, maybe three years or five years or something. We want to keep this fee low. We're not trying to discourage people from making this good additional use of their property, just trying to discourage the the concept of a hotel in a private neighborhood. But there are a few new things, and you're right. Grandfathered properties would have to comply with the quote new rules in the sense of, you know, making an application, you know, paying an annual fee. That's right. And I don't believe we need to do any of this minimum number of stays because if if somebody, you know, every year decides they want to rent out their house on Cal Poly Weekend or their A D U or all of their bedrooms or whatever, except for one, more power to them. We shouldn't say, oh, no, no.
They're going to stay with a friend in a Tascadero. Someone else is staying in front of here and then renting out their whole house. Why not? As long as someone's there to.
Regarding to minimum number of stays, I think that only, that comes into play if we allow this as a use and if we restrict how many licenses can be done, particularly within a, you know, a given period. You know, then then I think we, in order to keep somebody from gaming the system, then they actually have to to use it.
I think that what we're talking about actually means that we don't need a map, a cap. I think this, I think this, what we're talking about, takes care of a lot of the problems that we've been discussing.
I think so. I do think we should should be mindful of multifamily units as well. Because while I think all of us have the, are homeowners and have the benefit of of being in a, in a neighborhood where we expect everybody else to not have a commercial building, that those who live in apartments are not expecting a hotel to be next door. Either they're also expecting a neighbor, not a hotel. And there's.
Correct. We, yes, you are correct. We've talked about that and.
That we should, that that should be. And that is our, particularly our most important affordable housing stock to make available to to people so that young people who are developing their careers.
So let's, let's pull, Director, did you have, I think your recommendation was somewhere in the five to 10% range for multifamily. Do you have a slide for that or is that more just discussion?
It's in your staff report. I don't have a slide for that, but it is on page 71 of your staff report where there's a discussion for multifamily that, you know, we threw out some numbers that somewhere between five and 10%, which roughly be one per tenure, tenure to department.
With a minimum of one unit for anything that has less than 10.
Yeah.
And then kind of keeping that commercial at 40%, that's kind of what it's been citywide for some time.
Yes.
Okay.
Just one thing for clarification, if I can, because it popped in my head. Certain properties, somebody might own several properties together, but they use it as one single property. So you have three A P N numbers, but you've got your main house and basically you, you're kind of spread out. I mean, is that going to be an issue with defining the main, I don't think it's going to be an issue, right?
That wouldn't be an issue if we have an ordinance that says primary, primaries, one house.
Right. So it doesn't matter about the other two A P N numbers because you're just talking about the residence. That's, yeah, all right, thanks.
But I think the idea is you could be living in the primary residence and rent out the other, the others as long as it's not after 2020.
Oh, in terms of A D Us, you're speaking correct.
Oh, were you talking about just three separate, single family residents or are you talking about?
No, 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 just you have three, three lots together. Maybe there are three narrow lots, whatever. You have a house on whatever.
Got it. Okay. Totally different. Mayor Potem Funk followed by Councilmember Newsom.
Sure. Coming back to the commercial zoning district for multifamily that's in that commercial zoning. The, my understanding is that the, am I correct, that the 40% is not related to any of the kinds of goals that, that 40% is the current practice, right? It's the only current limit we have, right?
Yes, and it's solely related to building code. It's because of the fact that once you have a greater proportion of the units as vacation rentals, then really technically it's a hotel, it's a motel. And technically it has different code standards. And so that was something that was developed by our former building official. It's not specifically tied to a state or local law or or anything else.
Yeah, okay. So that the, what, what I'm hearing there is that the purpose of that is not related to the kind of goals we're talking about, about neighborhood quality preservation or affordable housing stock retention or, you know, keeping the authenticity of our community.
But that's it.
But it's really much.
But but actually, Director, could you clarify? Because I think I know where you're going, Mayor Potem. So we're talking commercial, like downtown, we're not talking a neighborhood with an apartment complex, it could be 40%. That's not.
Take La Plaza, for example. La Plaza is a commercial district. It has 42 residential units in it right now. There are some vacation rentals in La Plaza right now. So what we're saying is if, you know, 20 of those units wanted to convert to vacation rentals under our current policy, that would be allowed. Now, if we went to something that said you can't do anything outside of a primary residence, that would probably change dramatically over the years in in La Plaza. That would be a whole different thing, and that would regulate itself.
Yeah.
Unless you didn't have commercial districts under that primary residence rule, because mixed use projects are different. They are a different animal. And oftentimes, mixed use projects are next door to a hotel or above a hotel or within a hotel. They're a commercial property. They have a different standard. They're not a neighborhood. They're, they're usually vertical, high rise projects.
Right, but you're not necessarily, even in a mixed news project, you're not necessarily expecting it to be a hotel.
You're not. It has different, you have neighbors. You do have people that live there long term, and you create a neighborhood in itself in that project, and that's what La Plaza has become, for example.
Yeah, and La Plaza would be a good example of something that we might, we would be specific in it, as we're looking at our grandfathering. How do we do that? But if you look at the, you know, the future of the downtown that we're envisioning over downtown area over the next 20 years of this community that we see in the, in the building plan, I don't see us wanting that to to be 40%, up to 40% short term rentals. And, you know, have all of the variability that goes with that, that we're looking to create a more residential environment with it. And so I think that that we should be attentive to commercial zoning districts as well as multifamily and having some restrictions in order to preserve the quality of life that we are attempting to create in those environments.
I think my concern with the commercial aspect of it is oftentimes when somebody is coming in and being willing to put their put their money, blood, sweat, tears into a project like La Plaza, to take away that ability to do the S T Rs could limit the financial viability of it. So that concerns me a little bit. That that could not be the case, but, you know, possibly something that we look into as we're, because we're not saying, hey, come back next month with this at 40% or this at 20%. But I think that's something that that we could look at. I have a feeling that this will come back maybe a couple of times, not just one and done. So I think.
There's a bit of work here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, keep in mind, too, with a commercial property, I mean, La Plaza could come in tomorrow and say, you know what, we've decided we're going to turn into a hotel. And they could do that by simply putting a couple different fire alarms and exits in there, and it'd be allowed by zoning, and we wouldn't have a whole lot to say about it. It's kind of interesting thought, so.
Well, I think I, I agree with the concern that Mayor Potem Funk raised, but I would agree with the analysis that the mayor provided that I'm not sure what it would do to commercial viability of some of these things, because offhand, 40% does seem too high to me. But I'd like to, you know, hear from the folks who build these kind of things, what that impact is. You know, what they gain from that flexibility. Are they actually using that flexibility at La Plaza's? But I think it's a valid concern to raise, and as the mayor noted, we don't have to decide on 40 or 20 or 30 or 10 tonight. We can. But it's an issue we need to get some more detail on before we would make a decision.
Mayor, if I may, to help move this along, I think we can certainly get more information on that in our next report. Remember, tonight was just even trying to figure out, are we interested? Our next meeting would have more noticing, more input. But I do think we should, so on that, we got it. On the multifamily residential product, I, I, Councilmember said we should preserve that for rental housing. It seemed a few of you were kind of nodding your head, and yours, but that would be helpful direction to get tonight to address that further or not address that when we come back.
Let me have, yeah, Councilmember Newsom has been patiently waiting.
No worries. I was just going to make a recommendation to staff as we're having this conversation back and forth about primary residence, primary residing on site, is that perhaps, as other jurisdictions do, they require a 24 hour property management company does not allow investors to own it and that it's an actual person that resides locally that manages the property. I do want it to be not very complex. I don't want to lose our T O T, and that's why I was worried about the public outreach, to understand how this is going to impact. So as you're doing that feedback, and then the only other thing I want to add is, is when we looked over at the comparison to the other jurisdictions, none of them had a minimum stay requirement. We do not want to be the most restrictive city with the least amount of information of how it's split between home shares. So as we're, as you're bringing it back, I think it's important to look at all of these key aspects and to also make sure that we're addressing the general plan update, because we did change some overlays and adjust some housing and density requirements in some areas throughout our community.
And I think that the, well, well, well taken with the the general plan update. But I think the minimum stays, I would agree, we don't want to be restrictive. We want this to be easy. And I think if we're talking primary residence or resident on site, meaning they live in the A D U, they're running the primary, they're in the primary and they rent the A D U. I don't think the minimum stay is an issue. And as Councilmember Borbo said, you don't want, you know, someone says, oh, Cal Poly Weekend, you know, I'm going to rent out my whole house, you know, great. We don't want to say that you can't do it just once. You have to do it 10 times if you're going to do it at all. But if we have these parameters in place, it takes care of a lot of those issues. So being that we don't have to nail anything more down tonight, I'm going to ask staff, do you feel like in this discussion, you have a good understanding of where we, we'd like to see this, this go, and of course, then the outreach to the, you know, to the current short term rental folks and and others for future meetings?
Primary, primary, primary is what I've heard.
And multifamily, you know, maybe looking in that.
Primary, but otherwise keep it easy and simple.
Keep it easy and simple. Looking at the commercial aspect, talking with folks about.
Bring back some more statistics about what's out there today. Do outreach to everybody that's out there today so they can be part of this conversation.
Yes.
And, yeah, I think unless it was anything else, I think.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, I do think as we do outreach to folks who are using their properties as short term rentals, that we make an effort to reach out to people who are neighbors of properties that are being used as short term rentals, so that we are hearing a full picture of this and not just one side of the equation, but but getting a fuller understanding. And that let, let everybody, let us get all, everybody's best.
We got it. All right. Are we good to go? All right, we are done with that item. Excellent. Do we need a motion or we're, it was just giving you information, right?
Just a discussion tonight.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Okay, how are we doing? Do we need a break or do we want to go on to purchasing policy? Okay, so we're going to go on to purchasing poly, policy number two with our administrative services director, Ms. Jerry Rangel.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are going to review the purchasing policy. And it, we did get, sorry, we did get an opportunity to go over this with the the finance committee, so they did get a very thorough review of this, and I appreciate all the efforts from the finance committee for their work on this as well. Okay, and so the purchasing policy, just in general, is kind of an overview. It provides guidelines for our city purchases. So we try to get the best value with the funds available. We want to ensure fair and open competition, and we want to be consistent with applicable laws and regulations. The policy is reviewed and amended periodically as needed to reflect those practices. And as I said, it was thoroughly reviewed by the finance committee. The bulk of the purchasing policy really stayed the same. However, I wanted to call a few of the changes to your attention. In April of this year, the council adopted a digital signature policy. And so this purchasing policy adds a little section, kind of clarifying language that was added to reflect that, that change in the digital signature policy that the council added earlier in the year. The California Public Contract Code amounts changed periodically, so this, these amounts in the, this current red line draft here have been updated to the current amounts. We do reference the California Public Contract Code in the policies, so even if they would change after this, they would still be the current numbers that are affected there. So it can still remain current in between updates. And we also added an entire full section on design, build, procurement. We really hope to use this method to build our fire station and our E O C and the other public safety facilities and expect that this will save the city both time and money for those, those projects. It's a very lengthy section. It's kind of hard to read and get through, but for very good reason, there's, as you can imagine, a lot of compliance and everything that we need to go through, and city attorney has assured us that all of this is very important to be in compliance. And we have updated the travel policy as well to streamline, clarify and modernize our, our language in there. We really encourage our employees to go to trainings and professional conferences to really keep up their skills and make sure that they're knowledgeable and proficient. The goals of the travel update changes are to make it easier to understand and follow the policy for all of us to continue to keep travel costs low and to improve the management review of those costs and reimbursement claims. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you have.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for Director Rangel? I'm not seeing any questions.
I was going to make comment when we get the comments.
Just on the design build standards. Did we make an effort to model these design build standards on what we see as best practice in well managed cities through context such as the League of California Cities?
Yes, we did get some very great help from our city attorney on this, this section. And there is a lot that we have to be in compliance with on the state. So is, they are best, best practices and aligned with state law. I don't know if our city attorney wants to add any additional.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that for many years, general law cities such as a Tascadero did not have the ability to do design build. It was reserved to charter cities. Legislature has been slowly letting out the leash on that one for general law cities and the experience has been that it produces better projects at a lower cost. And so the legislature has expanded the opportunities for general law cities to engage in design build. We're taking advantage of that process right now with public safety facility. But having had that experience, a lot of general law cities have come up with best practices on how to manage that. So we not only learned from those opportunities, but we learned from the experience of charter cities in in doing those projects as well.
Great, thank you. One other question, and that is for these design build contracts where that is, and these tend to be, of course, larger value contracts. Does the same change order limit apply? I was noticing in other contracts that that the city manager can do a change order for up to 25% of the cost of the project as long as it's under that limit. And I just wondered if that same breakpoint applies as to design build.
That is a great question, and I don't know that we built that into that section. It, it would be our intention that that would be consistent throughout the policy. And certainly, anything that was very significant or had a, a large change to a project, the staff would come back to the council for direction and or additional budget adjustment if, if that, if we got to that point. the staff would come back to the council for direction and/or additional budget, um, adjustment if, if that, if we got to that point.
Okay.
And if I could point out, one of the advantages of design build is that the designer is building and can anticipate what those change orders would be. So design build projects have a much lower incidence of change orders necessary because they've already built that into their underlying price.
Question?
Well, now I have a question, actually. Because I, I, I thought in our, because we discussed this for, um, but this and the investment policy, which we approved, or were discussed last week and approved on the consent calendar this evening.
The point on having you on the finance committee is you wouldn't have a question.
Right. So we, we discussed it for this for almost two and a half hours in total. So we, we were very thorough. But I thought we did discuss the issue, uh, raised by Mayor Pro Tim Funk regarding, you know, the city manager has a certain, uh, contract award authority. But that a 10% change order on a, on a very large design bill contract, design bill contract would greatly exceed that. We kind of discussed that, but I'm forgetting where we ended up on that and I don't see it off the top of my head.
What, where we ended up is the authority I have isn't the policy. While that's the authority, that doesn't mean that's the pragmatic thing. If there was a $2 million change order, I would not see a situation where I don't come to you to talk to you about that. And there was really an error in the scope or something at that point. So we had talked about while that authority may exist, it's not in the best interest of this city manager to do something like that without coming to the council.
Plus the budgetary, you'd have to come, you have to really come for the budgetary authority.
Because that's right, because you've already given that.
I think that was the answer.
And then we talked about, you know, emergency or odd circumstances that could delay the project. And so you left it in there knowing that the city manager should have discretion to come to you if there's time.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
I want to thank staff, Mr. Fleischman. I mean, my head hurt when I read through that. So.
And I want to add that.
So glad there's people that do that work.
Very thorough meeting and somewhat unusually, I had less questions than Councilmember Newsom. She was, she was very thorough in questioning.
I heard she was responsible for some of the changes too. So thank you both, uh, for, uh, for your time and commitment to that. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? I am seeing none. We'll go ahead and close public comment and I'll bring that back for a motion.
Well, actually I did have a comment. Wasn't a question. So it was a comment.
Why don't you comment and then make a motion?
Yeah, I will do that. Um, on page 159 of our agenda packet, when we talk about travel expense reimbursement, we talk about under certain circumstances, the city manager may authorize, um, something other than the cheapest seat in order to, you know, be able to, for people to, on the executive team and, and the city manager to be able to work on a plane. And it said includes eligible members of the city council. And, uh, you know, I always think that city council should probably apply the cheapest thing available. And since we make less than minimum wage, we are not highly paid executive employees. So I was going to suggest that we not include the city council in that particular provision.
All right.
Another, I would move the, move the approval of the policy as presented with deleting the city council on that one.
I would not want to delete the city council on that one. The lowest fare is sometimes the fare that can be canceled at the last minute and you can't make it. So no, I don't think an extra $39 or something is going to break our budget for a council member to fly on a shirt seat.
Not going to break the budget. It's more a matter of, uh, appearance, if you will, about us, including us, giving us an exception, Ron.
I'll second. So I, I, I don't, I wouldn't support a motion with it being removed.
Okay, then I'll, I'll withdraw the motion. Let somebody else make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve it as, as written.
Have a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Newsom, a second by Councilmember Deras. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Deras.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Still ready to move on without a break? How are we doing? Yeah? All right. We'll move on to our final, uh, final management report of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce contract for fiscal years 2025, 2027. And this will be our city manager, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'll start it out and then I'll turn it over to Laura Lee Capel, Deputy Director for Economic Development. I first want to share that the city, uh, enjoys an excellent relationship with its Chamber of Commerce. I think that unfortunately is unique in California cities. And so I think we really enjoy, and I want to thank Mr. Cross, the CEO and his board, uh, for the good work they do in our community. And that's why agreements like this are even possible, right? We've had an exceptional, uh, run and they've done excellent work for us. And Ms. Capel will talk about in just a moment. And so the council had asked to look at this again. Were there other products and projects that the chamber could work on? And so, uh, Mr. Cross and his team, me and Laura Lee, we collaboratively worked through agreement, which we'll share with you tonight. But I did want to, this is a great agreement. It's probably, it is the strongest chamber of commerce I've worked with in 26 years in municipal government and we don't take that for granted. So thank you, sir, for the work you and your team do. So before you tonight is a new agreement at the same value of what we pay the chamber now. Again, to credit the chamber, they had recognized that much of the work we've been asking them to do was completed, which you'll hear in just a minute. And so they said, well, are there other things you'd like to collaborate on that we could do? And so that's the basis of what's before you tonight. But I will turn it over to Ms. Capel to, uh, talk through the successes of our current agreement. And then I'll share where we're headed into the future.
Great. Thank you, Jim. All right. So let's talk a little bit about the, um, existing, or the past contributions that the chamber has made. So kind of going through this with, um, the chamber, um, in preparation for this new scope of work. We've gone through some of the things that have been accomplished. And I think it's important to note, and Josh says this well, when he talks about chambers, the, the role of chambers has evolved greatly. It used to be about planning parties and hosting events primarily and just really about exposure and networking. And then, and our chamber specifically has changed from the three Ps, parades, pageants and parties as chambers across the nation typically used to do, to the three Cs, which is the convener champion and, um, catalyst for businesses. So I think they've done a really great job of hearing the call of what is the new role of chambers and really pivoting in Atascadero for economic development. So here's some of the things that they've done that have contributed greatly to our community, but also have been important to our city, um, as a whole. So Bridgework's coworking space, it's really important to note that this has provided over 28 head of household jobs since they've created a coworking space at the Chamber of Commerce. They rent desks. They have private office space. They have conference rooms with high definition, high internet, internet speed fiber for all of those people that are, um, commuting or telecommuting from their homes in Atascadero. And they brought them together. They've created an environment where it's inspiring. They can have coffee together and, and meet. And that's been really advantageous, especially as one of our council's goals is to create quality jobs and create an ecosystem for that. Women of Influence North County, you were all at the event, um, last month or earlier this month. And, um, that's a really interesting and really important thing. And it's been sold out for the last couple of years. Um, noting that it's, shows and underscores the importance of elevating women in our region and talking about the accomplishments and the great work they're doing in the community. We also have seen that the chamber has retooled the State of North County, which used to be an event, um, that was, you know, hosted in concert with the Passerables Chamber. But this year we hosted a State of the City at the movie theater. It was well-attended and we had a lot of great feedback about all the great things that were happening. Uh, the chamber also this year has been awarded several, um, awards that actually just shine light, light on Atascadero as well. So I want to make sure that everybody knows how important it is that they did win West, Best Website. And this is from the, uh, Western, um, it's called the WACE, um, the Western Chamber of Society. But this is really interesting because we beat out places like, um, Albuquerque and other really interesting large places. And Little Atascadero is doing really big things and making news. So I want to commend them on that. They also created, it got the number one business or new model and, um, the Get Your Business Online program, which is a grant-funded but also supported by the city. And they've, um, started, I think, over 125 websites for free for some of our businesses that were not previously online. And that's really great for helping grow businesses and help them get up to the digital era. So congratulations on that. Um, the Business Startup Guide, that was something we partnered with, um, the city and the chamber. And we had a committee that helped us work through this and it says everything you need to do from A to Z. When you come in and start a business, I use that at the counter and send it out as a resource when new businesses come in. And Josh has that at this, kind of a centerpiece of the, um, Business Resource Guide. So another really great thing, and it reminds people that if you're new at this, you also need to get a fictitious business license. And that's how you do that. And, and if you're going to do that, call the city and check to make sure your zoning is good before you sign a lease. Those are really big things and big mistakes that can make, be made if people don't know that that's out there. It's one of the first steps. So, um, and then finally, uh, I just saw this come across my desk, the Homeless Resource Toolkit. The city and the PD and the chamber worked on this, um, unhoused business toolkit, which is a really interesting, um, thing that helps our business owners understand how to compassionately address some of the challenges there that are common occurrences, um, with the unhoused population and, and how to address these things at what level they're at. And, um, I think that, um, our resource officers as well as, um, TIMA were also involved in the creation of this. So thank you, uh, for that. And I'll go ahead and really just turn it back over to Jim to talk about what's next for our, um, our people here and, and our chamber contract.
Thank you, Ms. Capel. Appreciate it. And the chamber has also been just a huge supporter on the street paving work downtown, the El Comino project, as you heard tonight, and, uh, many other things. So looking at where, looking forward over the next couple of years, where do we need support? Well, we know we need to fundraise for our zoo and continue to, uh, have the community invest as we shift the direction and focus of the Charles Paddock Zoo. And so, um, they have agreed to assist us with, uh, a number of fundraising events that are event-driven. But also more nuanced, I think, is having them connect us to their members where there could be co-branding opportunities, naming a, a draft beer after, for example, a zoo, a brewery in town, or, uh, featuring through products or manufacturing, zoo things to, uh, highlight the zoo in, uh, the private sector. So, uh, some neat opportunities there. A couple of roundtables I'm really looking forward to, the next, first is scheduled next week is a, a CEO roundtable. We're inviting CEOs from this community and adjacent communities to really meet with Mr. Cross and I to talk about trends they're seeing as executives of their companies in the private sector. And so what are they seeing as leading indicators? What are they seeing? Are there storm clouds on the horizon? Are they make, are they hiring, not hiring? When they're hiring people, what are some of the challenges in getting someone to come to Atascadero? And if they're not Atascadero, why aren't they? And, and, and just having those really candid conversations that will help advise me as I advise each of you on how we steer the community from an economic development perspective. So I'm really looking forward to those conversations. And then another, uh, roundtable that I was interested in was really, how do we safely get feedback from our development community? We're really continuing to work. I know the council is very supportive of business and supportive of development, the community. And so we staff are, are trying to come up with ways that might make that easier. But we're not in the development community. We're not architects. We're not builders. We're not. And so having a roundtable where one, we can share what we're doing. So having Mr. DeBar and Mr. Dunsmore and Mr. St. John, uh, come in and speak to things we're trying to implement at City Hall and why, and some things maybe the state is doing to cities that you may get frustrated with us, but why? And having some dialogue from our end, I think, to, to educate and, and connect, which will be really important. But then more important that we would step out, Mr. Cross kept facilitated discussion, almost a secret shopper program. For those of you who've worked with the city in the last six months, what went really well, what could have gone better? And their thoughts on improvements you might suggest, and that we would get a report on that, that we could take action on. So looking forward to that roundtable as well. Um, and then of course, continuing, there's an additional talk on the block in here. Those were, uh, we didn't get to those last year for a number of reasons, staffing being one of them. But we're looking forward to a robust talk on the block program that they'll continue to do. So those are just some of the highlights of the next contract and, uh, we're looking forward to that. So I think that concludes our app, uh, our presentation. Before you is a renewal of the agreement. This agreement will supersede the current agreement. The amount of the value of the contract for the year is the same. So that won't change. There won't be additional payment, um, but the additional, uh, new work will commence immediately. I think that's our last slide. It's our, I'll go ahead. There's a fiscal impact. You can see over the years of what we've paid. Uh, and that is what has been paid this year, uh, for the new services.
Thank you. Thank you both, Ms. Capel, Mr. Lewis. Very, um, very interested in those roundtables. I think that is a, is an excellent idea and will really provide some, some good feedback, um, to the city. And how can we be an, an even better partner with, uh, those who are, who are investing in our, in our community? So I will look to, uh, council for questions. Not seeing any. No. Okay. Not seeing any questions. So I'm going to go to the public. Any members of the public wishing to speak? I see a bunch of chamber folks out there. So I didn't know if any of you were here to speak on this.
Seth Peak, uh, the Chamber Board Member. I was a, I've been a member for, I don't know, five years for one of the businesses. And at first I got it because I wanted the sticker for the window and I thought that was kind of like what I had to do is get a business license, get a sticker for my window and then get a customer, right? But the more we have people like Julie and Eric that work at the chamber, the more the business owners actually take advantage of the programs that are there. That's what drew me into wanting to volunteer to get on the board. Um, I think the chamber is, is phenomenal. I've been to a lot of chamber events in other cities, other counties, and our, our city really has a special chamber and it really looks out for our local businesses. So just my rousing endorsement there.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Mr. Cross.
Good evening, Josh Cross, President and CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce. Uh, it's been an honor to serve this community for the last four years. That's how long I've, I've been doing this work. And I just love what I'm doing. I love the direction of Tasker I was going. Um, and I love all the partnerships we've created and the programs we've developed along the way. I think we, uh, have done a good job listening to the business community. We started a few years ago with a business walk, which many of you participated in. And that was our ability, our time where we started listening to what are the challenges that the business owners are having? And a lot of that came to be, um, about marketing. And so we put together the Get Your Business Online program, uh, homelessness issues. So we, you know, partnered with, uh, our, uh, police department to put together the unhoused toolkit. So, you know, we've, uh, we, I think we've done a good job listening to the business community. We've been a good partner along the city, uh, along with the city, and, uh, we look forward to serving you for many years to come. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Still see another chamber guy in the back. Any, anyone else wishing to speak?
Jeff Austin, resident business owner, City of Atascadero, of course. One of my businesses has been a member longer than I owned it for about 27 years now. And, uh, Josh has done a great job. And even before Josh, he's the first guy that's, uh, the chamber's the first, uh, entity that supported and actually suggested a tax for our roads because it helps business along with our residents not having problems with their vehicle. To go one step further, I was on the board in 2021 when Josh was hired. And, um, to see where this, where the chamber has come in the last five years is phenomenal. Um, I think their membership is well over 600 now, 700 now, excuse me. We're Atascadero. We have over 700 chamber members. We're competing with San Luis. This is incredible and they're growing every day. So our city, between our staff, our council, and the chamber, the partnership is phenomenal and this is great that we can continue this. So full support for continuing funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. I'm not seeing anyone else wishing to speak. So I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to, uh, to the council. And yes, I, when, when you came on, Josh, and we had bridge work and it was still kind of getting going. I mean, and now look, it's, it's flourishing. The, the work that you've done, your board, your team. I'm just, I, I, I couldn't be happier. And for you to really come forward and say, hey, we've accomplished these, what more can we partner on? I think that's one of the exciting things is that we do have that partnership. We have, we have similar goals. And you're able to, uh, to, to actually put feet to those and, and, and get things done that it's a little harder for us to do as a city. So grateful for that partnership and your commitment to the business community. And gosh, congratulations, 700 members. That's incredible. Oh, 756. So we're actually closer to 800. That is, that is amazing. Uh, I will see if any questions, comments, or look for a motion.
Ditto, ditto, and what you said. And I'll move approval of staff's recommendation to execute the new contract with chamber.
I'll, I'll second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by, uh, Councilmember Deras. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Deras.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you all. All right. We are going to move on to, we're at the tail end here. Council announcements and committee reports, uh, we'll let you know as, uh, on our own initiative. If there's anything that we've been involved in the community that we want you to know about, uh, or any standing committees on which we serve and we'll give a report. So I'll go from my right to my left, start with Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to report that I was at the, honored to be at the League of California Cities as a, um, voting delegate. It was a great conference in Long Beach last week, had amazing speakers, two of which are currently in this building. Got to hear the mayor speak along with our own city manager. Um, they filled their room more than some of the other conference, uh, meetings. So that was kind of cool. Um, to talk about collaboration and how, um, we are very fortunate to be in this community, to get along, to work and to. to be in this community, to get along, to work, and to really make a difference. And it shows when our leadership team and council can get together and share an inspiring moment and inspire other cities to be just like us. Also had an amazing expo showcasing a lot of vendors, software demos, including short-term rental vendors. Just interesting to see how all of the technology works. We are very blessed to live in the community in which we live in. We don't have nearly the challenges that our city faces that other communities do. And that is, we have a balanced budget. Thank you. We have respect for one another, and we also are growing. So it's always nice to come back and be inspired to lead some more. So thank you.
The HSLAC Executive Committee met last week, and we had a, a very constructive report on housing development in our community, in particular, housing in the category of deed-restricted affordable housing, which is the, pretty much the only way to get the very lowest income levels to be able to have housing in our, in our community. And it addresses a different set of needs than the folks who are in affordable by design housing and are going to build their, their wealth and careers. And essentially, and this is, it was valuable enough, this was from Scott Collins, the director of Haslow, on behalf of a group that's been working on this for some time, that includes Kentera from People's Self-Help, the Passive Housing Authority, and others that are working actively in this space. And essentially, most of the housing that, that is done for the lowest income groups is almost exclusively financed by federal tax credits. Those projects have been described to me as taking five to seven years to develop and requiring six to eight different sources of funding typically. So they're very complex to put together. And the times involved in putting together the financing, it's often about a three-year wait. To get the federal tax credits is like getting into Harvard. It's very competitive. And we have to have really superb projects and a little extra. And the, the main risk that our, our developers find is that while we've made, we've made really good progress in accelerating development in an effort to reach countywide goals, that the pots of money used for the local match portion of this, a local contribution, are all pretty much tapped out. And it's going to make it difficult for us over the next several years to take the projects that are in the pipeline but not yet financed and make sure that they can happen so that we can meet our, our goals of getting people off the streets and out of the creeks and into housing where they can be constructive members of the community.
Yes. There was no IWMA meeting this month, which I, is a good thing because it goes to our slogan of being stable, competent, and boring. Because you're just getting the job done, and things are going well. I did get word today, though, that the IWMA did close ESCRO on its new building on 555 Choro, which is right near the 101. And so it's just a block or so farther away from downtown than the current building, and the current building will ultimately be sold. And since there was no IWMA meeting on that day, October 9th, I did attend a luncheon put on by the Quest College Foundation and at the pavilion. And we had a couple of city employees there, Laura Lee from Economic Development, and Rachel, our HR person. And one of the things that was discussed that I found interesting was, A, their, their great work with the Atascadero High School on dual enrollment, where a lot of kids are getting Quest College credit. And it's kind of becoming more popular than taking AP courses. And the other thing is, this quest is efforts to help produce workforce-ready people in some very technical fields, like aviation maintenance and things like that, and, and other fields that, you know, will benefit our employers in our community. So it was a good thing. So, thanks.
Well, as committees and boards go, I've had a really quiet few weeks. So that's been kind of good for me. So I don't have anything to report.
And Councilmember Newsom kind of reported out for me from the League of California Cities. But what she did not tell you is the city manager, Mr. Lewis, and I got to go watch as she received a torch award. And so much congratulations to her for the work she's putting in and, and how she supports her city and, and really is getting involved. So thank you and congratulations. I don't see any individual determinations on the agenda, any that I don't know about. Nope. All right. Meeting adjourned.